That's what my wife does. Everywhere she goes, she brings knitting.
And the pizza.
My wife does that. Everywhere she goes, she brings knitting.
I have not found a place since we did the back.
Oh, you did? I'm not sure if she did, but.
How are you doing? Did you say summary?
Oh, wow. It's that time of year.
So then I. Good, I was.
I don't get anything out of it.
Just got back, so.
She makes a lot of stuff for herself, her friends, birthday gifts, the kids. The grandchild. I can't even recall. She's knitting. Sure she has in the past, but.
To come back.
She could kill me, couldn't she?
No, don't you remember?
Now, she loves, I think she does.
All right, good evening, everyone. It is now six o'clock on Tuesday, July 2nd, 2024. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the planning board. The planning board is a seven-member board. Any special permit decision of this board requires a two-thirds vote. Two-thirds of a seven-member board is five. If only five members vote, the vote would have to be unanimous. Any decision on preliminary and definitive plans, approval not required, and proposed zoning amendments requires a majority vote in the full board. Any decision on the scenic road permits requires a majority of the quorum present. Any person giving testimony must state and spell their name and provide their street for the record. All questions from the public should be directed through the chair. This meeting is live and streamed on Sandwich Community Television's website and on local Channel 9. This meeting is being recorded and will be available on the SCTV website at www.sandwichtv.org tomorrow. According to town bylaws, bylaw meetings are audio-recorded. If anyone intends to also record, kindly notify the chair. Anyone? Okay, great. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, great. So I know there was a lot of us were absent at the last meeting, so I wanted to say welcome to our newest board members, Jeanne and Eileen. Thank you so much for running, and I'm happy that you're here. Okay, and then there's a board reorganization. So every year, the position of chairs, there can be nominations, and the position of chair gets voted in, and same with the vice chair. So anything you'd like to add to that, or?
Nope, looks like Jeff might have a question.
Okay, great. So go ahead, Jeff.
So like, my comment is that it's no longer every year we change that. It's two years back in.
I think it was that you still had to nominate and have it voted in, but that they could serve for a total of two years.
No, we changed it. It was always two years you could serve, and then we changed the procedure, unless Leanne, it wasn't legal. But we changed it to, you only had to vote every other year.
Yes, so we changed the procedure in the planning board rules and regulations, and then the town clerk told us that we could not do that, per the charter. So now we're back to doing it every year, yeah.
I knew we had changed it.
Yes, we did, yeah.
And serving for two, total.
And you can serve for two years, yeah.
Consecutive.
Yeah, yes.
Anything further that addresses what you wanted to?
I knew we had changed it, because it was too consecutive. It's always been too consecutive. We said, "Why vote every year?" We changed it, but I hadn't heard that town clerk turned it down.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Anybody else have any other further comment? Okay, well, seeing that, if there's any nominations for chair, you can place those now.
I nominate Jennifer Reising for chair.
I second that.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you. I accept. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose or abstain? Okay, great, thank you. Position of vice chair, I would like to nominate Melissa Dugan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose or abstain? Okay, great. Well, welcome, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. All right, so next on the agenda is a review and approval of minutes. So those minutes are from June 18th, 2024. We can open that up for board comment, if any.
So I, I'm sorry. Melissa had, I thought, Melissa.
Um, we're gonna motion after, see if anybody has any comments, and then we'll move.
So I do have some comments. And I've been back and forth with emails with Leanne and Ralph on this. So in reading, I wasn't at the meeting, and reading the minutes, I was surprised to see that we convened a meeting and opened a public hearing without a quorum. You know, from everything that I've been trained on, and I went back and read the open meeting law and the frequently asked questions and so forth, it clearly states in there that you need a quorum to convene a public meeting, and you need a quorum to convene a public hearing. And we did not have a quorum. It states that in the minutes. Now, when I say it states that, it only states it if you look at the number of people present. It never does state it anywhere else that a quorum was not present. So my question is, you know, the minutes are not complete. Minutes need to stand on their own. They need to be able to, if you read the minutes, you need to be able to answer questions like that. Gee, why were we able to hold a public hearing and a public meeting without a quorum? And never in here, one, it never recognizes that was the case, and two, it never gives the explanation. I've been emailing, like I said, with Ralph and Leanne to, you know, I pointed that out. I got an explanation. If you want to give the explanation, Leanne, as to why? And then, you know, we need to, you know, I believe we need to put an explanation in here. I also have some comments after Leanne explains why we're able to do that.
Okay, so this actually, this issue arose several years ago, where we knew we were going to have, we were going to be uptight on a public hearing deadline, and we knew we wouldn't have quorum, and it was near the Christmas time. So typically, we had always re-advertized if we knew we were going to miss, if we were going to be up against that type of deadline. So we reached out to town council, it was probably about three or four years ago, and we asked them, like, "What do you do in this type of situation where you know you're gonna lapse on deadlines?" So they explained to us that you could hold the hearing without the quorum present. You could continue the hearing, that you would be able to continue it. Anyone from the public that would be coming to hear it would see that it be continued to a time and date certain. It was a verbal conversation that we had had with them, and since then, we've done it maybe once or twice, and probably the second time was what happened at our last meeting, that we knew we wouldn't have a quorum present, so that we said, "Okay, we will continue the public hearing until the following meeting." No decisions were made. We took no testimony. We didn't read in any comment memos. It was just there to procedurally move the hearing to the next meeting. So after getting Jeff's emails yesterday evening and this morning, Ralph has reached out to town council to get a written opinion, so that you all have it and feel comfortable with moving forward, so that you have in writing that we are legally allowed to do it. How it was explained to us before was the scenario doesn't come up within the open meeting law, but the application has gone through the court process, and it had been upheld there, which is why they felt comfortable stating that we could do it this way. But as Jeff mentions, it is not referenced, that particular scenario, within the open meeting law.
Thank you very much for that.
In fact, it's not referenced. I haven't found a reference. You haven't found a reference. But it is clearly referenced in the material that you can't hold without a quorum. So I'm a little confused as to, and because we don't have anything in writing, and we don't have any referral. We can't refer to what it is, you know? Was it a case, as you said? Was it, did it go to court? Because usually what happens is stuff goes to court. There's a case, and a decision's made, and that sets a precedence for the future. We have no examples here of that. I am concerned. I understand the town council made this decision. You know, as evidenced recently, you can put lawyers in a room, and you can get multiple decisions. I mean, just look at what the Supreme Court does. You never have unanimous, it's, you know, it's. So I understand our town council has agreed with this. Everything I've looked, I can't find anything. Unfortunately, we can't get anything in writing. I think we need to put into the minutes that we didn't have a quorum, it was based on a verbal conversation with the town council three or four years ago, and that further research is being done. I think that needs to be captured for the record.
May I ask just the concern? Is the concern that if a vote were to be taken, it wouldn't be upheld? Or is there a matter of just more of a procedural concern?
So we're, if we violated, okay, the open meeting law, that is, we did not have a quorum. We should not have opened the meeting, and we should not have opened the public hearing. That's a violation. There are two types of violations. There are what's called intentional and unintentional. This would probably be classified as an unintentional, because we were acting on the advice of a town council. If it was, you know, someone objected to it, it could go to court, and it could be upheld or not upheld. We don't know. That's why it's always best to act in accordance with the laws and so forth, because you don't want to create an opportunity for, you know, for someone to object and take it to court and so forth. So I don't know what would happen. What I do know, it's clear that we acted in a way against what we have been able to find in writing. We haven't been able to find anything in writing that says we could act this way. So that's very clear. Is it a violation or not? I don't know. I'm concerned that it is. Town council says it isn't. That's where we stand right now. You know, the town feels they're covered by the town council's comments of three or four years ago, and they feel they've done this before. So they've recommended we move forward. And so we will move forward in that way. I don't know where it's gonna go. We still have to wait to hear back from town council. We need to get something in writing, and then we'll go from there. This needs to be captured in the minutes. We need to know that, you know, we took this action, you know, because of the following reasons. None of that's explained here, so that's why I'm bringing it up during this part of the meeting. And I think there's general agreement, you can tell me if I'm different, Leanne, that Ralph agrees, you agree, that we should be capturing this in the minutes, that we didn't have a quorum, that should be captured. Why we were able to move forward without a quorum should be captured.
Yeah, absolutely no objection to adding that in, yeah.
We are, I am in an alternate opinion relative to the office relative, should we have. I don't think we should have moved forward. They believe we should have, but I'm just one person. Okay, so that's one item. The next item is.
May I ask a question on that item?
Sure.
Was there, it seems that there was no discussion, right? That the.
Oh, that's a good ques, I don't know. I didn't ask Ralph that. At the meeting on June 18th, did you discuss the fact there was no quorum, and you could move forward based on the town council's opinion?
No. Melissa was acting as chair that night. She was briefed by Ralph prior to the meeting to just go straight to the vote, to move it to the next meeting, and that's all they could discuss.
We did announce that there was not a quorum. And due to that, we needed to then postpone that item.
So it's.
You didn't postpone it. You actually, you actually opened the meeting, and you opened the public hearing, and then you did a continuation. So there was nothing postponed in that way. But it did get discussed. Ralph discussed it with you beforehand, and then in the meeting, it was mentioned. So, and that isn't captured in the minutes.
So on that item, are you making a motion? Or is the, are the additional items that you have also pertinent to what occurred on June 18th, where some of us weren't present?
I'm not sure I'm answering your question, so let me answer it this way. Right now, we're talking, we always ask for comments and feedback on the minutes, and then we'll have a motion to approve the minutes with some agreed-to changes. We haven't agreed to any changes yet. I'm presenting some comments. That's the process we've always used. So how does, does that answer your question?
Yes, I just didn't know if you wanted to formally make a motion with regard to.
I will when I'm done.
Okay, but not yet.
Not yet, because I'm not done.
Thank you.
But I think, like I said, Ralph and I have emailed back. Leanne's been on the emails. It's just been a process related, which is okay. And I think you're in general agreement that indeed we need to capture this in the minutes.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. The next thing was that there was an agenda published for the June 18th meeting. That agenda was not executed, and that's not captured in the minutes. There was only one item captured. You know, the public hearing was opened and then continued. All other business was not conducted. But there's no, there's no definition. There's no explanation of that in the minutes. You know, one would take the agenda and read the minutes, and you'd say, "What's going on? There's no alignment. You can't find minutes on each item." So I think we need something in there that says we, no other business was conducted because we didn't have a quorum. That needs to be stated in there. So we understand why the other business wasn't done.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. The next thing is, on June 18th, there were two sets of minutes to approve, and they were not addressed, because you didn't do any other business. But they're not on tonight's agenda. So when are we gonna approve those minutes? And should have they been on tonight's agenda?
You know, so what happened is, our lovely Maureen was on vacation, and I. No, this is why the minutes aren't as great. No, I know, but this is just, it was honestly just an oversight on our part, that we, the planning board agenda was already drafted by our lovely Maureen before she went on vacation, and then I never thought to put the minutes over. So that was, that was an oversight on my part.
So they still sit out there unapproved?
Correct.
And we'll have to get them at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, because there was no, so we need to capture in the minutes. We don't need to capture that. We just need to recognize we gotta approve them eventually.
Yeah.
But we do have to put into the minutes that we did not conduct any other business.
Yes, that makes sense.
For the reason that we did not have a quorum, and because we didn't have a quorum, we could not conduct other business. Which is, brings us back to why I'm concerned that we're able to conduct some business, but not other business, not having a quorum. Because only one piece of the agenda was done. So this is, this is why I'm sitting here concerned about the action we took. I sit there, I know that the office is comfortable with the actions that were taken, but I'm uncomfortable. So with respect to the minutes, what I'd like to see happen is that, you know, we amend them by putting in there, capturing that we didn't have a quorum, capturing that all agenda items except for the public hearing were not executed, because we didn't have a quorum. Only the public hearing was opened and addressed, and that was based upon prior conversations with the town clerk, who said we could do that. I think we have to capture that. It, you know, it states that we then did open it, we then continued it, and then we're back here tonight. So to me, that would make the minutes complete. Then someone could pick the minutes up and compare it to the agenda, and look at it and say, "Ah, I see what happened. They did, they did." Because right now, you can't, you can't, you can't figure that. So if that's okay with everyone, that's the motion I would make, that we add those, and that we approve the minutes with those changes.
Motion, anyone second?
I'll second it.
All right, anyone in favor? Aye. You want to abstain or object? Okay, great. With, that was the motion on the change. Any other comments? If no other comments, we'll make a motion to approve the amended minutes from June 18th.
I motion to approve the amended minutes from June 18th, 2024.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose or abstain? Okay, great. So we'll move on to submission of new plans. Any new plans? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to old business.
So can I just interrupt for a second? Chairperson's permission? So the next item is old business. This is the special permit.
I haven't introduced it yet.
No, it's the next agenda item. You did, you said old business.
I was just about to. Go, carry on.
Okay, so I am going to recuse myself. I recuse myself? I think that's the word. I'm gonna recuse myself from this portion of the meeting. I will rejoin the meeting when this agenda item is done. I'm recusing myself, because I'm, I'm, I'm on the other side of the fence relative to, I don't believe we should have proceeded as we did at the prior meeting. I think we are continuing that error if we continue the hearing tonight. But the town has made a decision that we can, as long as, you know, as long as board members, you agree, each of you agree. I don't, so I'm gonna recuse myself. It doesn't impact anything relative to, I'm not sure who's presenting, who's the family, because you still have, you need five, at least five, you still have at least five.
I'll take it, I'll take it from there, thank you. Okay, so we understand you're gonna abstain.
I'm not abstaining. I am recusing myself from this agenda item, and I'm explaining why.
Thank you.
You don't need to explain it for me.
Okay.
I'm now done, and you can take over.
Wonderful. So old business is 8 and 10 Cranberry Trail. It's a special permit. Haigian is continued from our last meeting of June 18th, 2024. It's a public hearing, and it does remain open. It's for the purpose of constructing an accessory dwelling unit. And if I may, applicants, you're welcome to come up. And I'm also gonna have to recuse myself, unfortunately. I did represent you in the purchase of 8 Cranberry Trail, and I think it would be a conflict to, to add into the decision. But with that being said, there are five members here. It would require a unanimous decision. One quick question for Leanne. If I may ask the applicants if they wanna, you know, go ahead and try to get unanimous vote today? Or with the written writing of, or wait for next week until we have a written opinion or next meeting for Jeff to join? Is that something that I can offer to them? Or how would that work? Is that?
Well, it would depend if Jeff was of the opinion that if town council's opinion came back in our favor, if he would rejoin at that point.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff.
Will he come back?
Are we not supposed to see?
So they answer that question.
It's just, it depends on what he would do.
With respect to that question, town council comes back in writing and references, you know, the case or the, which is what's usually done. They usually reference, "This case went to the court, and it was decided that under these circumstances, you could." If we get that back, absolutely, I would rejoin the board and work through this.
Okay.
We don't currently have that. What we have is something that was said three or four years ago, and we don't know if it's directly applicable. That's my concern. Again, everything I've been trained on says you can't do this.
Okay, so with the.
So yes, I would come back if we got.
With a written opinion, okay.
So you can offer that to the applicants?
Okay, so just to make it an offer to you, you know, if you wanna go for a seek-a-vote tonight, it would require unanimous decision, because there are five members here voting. If you elected to wait until next meeting, you could do so, and by doing so, assuming that the opinion is forthcoming and it'll be in writing, and Jeff would join back in, then you'd have a one-member buffer.
When is the next meeting?
July 16th.
July 16th, two weeks. And would today be a day that we would present? Because there is a quorum, but not vote in order to wait for an opinion?
I think it would be fine to present, being that we're all here, and Jeff is here, and you're here, and you've prepared and spent the time to prepare. I think that's appropriate. And then if you elected to just come back and maybe do a brief summary overview just to refresh us, that might work. Does everybody feel of the same opinion? Okay.
And just to add, the applicant can always ask the committee for a straw poll vote to see, you know, where they were in favor of before the close of the public hearing. So if you felt comfortable that you were going to get a unanimous five, you could potentially then move forward tonight.
And we could take a straw to see where everybody stands before we take a vote.
In my own experience in meetings, my name is Paul Haigian. I'm the applicant, I'm also the architect, and one of the homeowners. I'm with John. I think in my experience in these situations, sometimes questions come up that we can answer, and we can make a decision together in two weeks, that if there is a question that came up, I could bring that answer to that to you here. So it would be in the benefit of both the board and ourselves in order to make this process helpful and educational. So I think I'd love to be able to present a project and answer any questions you have, and then ask the end of the course.
You just seem to speak into the mic. Sorry.
Stand here.
How's that? Better?
Yeah.
Okay. As I say, my name is Paul Haigian. We own the property at 10 Cranberry Trail a number of years ago. The property beside us came for, upon the market, and we decided to purchase that and combine the properties, and then asked the town to build a small accessory dwelling unit. I'm finding in my own practice that these units are scaled appropriately to a particular property, and there is a main house. If you look, I didn't, I brought a board. Is it helpful to do it on the screen, or shall I add the boards here?
Feel free to use a board, yeah.
Maybe I can do that. If I can see it. And I can maybe point. Thank you. As you can see, there's an existing, our existing house is off Cranberry Trail, and, which is a quiet street, and we have a circular driveway. And then the location of the accessory dwelling unit, which would have a two-car garage on the lower level, and then a small office, a home office for myself at some point when I do retire. And then above that would be a small-scale accessory dwelling unit of about 576 square feet. There would be no new access. We would access the garage and the driveway from our existing circular driveway, so there would be no change to any curcuts or access from Cranberry Trail. It is outside of the buffer zone that is here. There is a wetlands area that surrounds in this area. And then, again, it is appropriately distanced from the other structures and the existing, there's a screen porch here and an existing house. And so I think I can move it to the next image. We would meet the zoning, which is the set backs. And I think the next image has the photographs of the property, and you can begin to see where there's a new garage. Yeah? It's a shingle-styled house. We had renovated it about 10 or 11 years ago to make it into more of a cave-style architecture. And so we plan on matching with the materials, the new accessory dwelling unit and the two-car garage, similar window style and similar shingle style. Right now, there is a number of, it's a wooded lot. It's vacant, and by combining the two properties, we would create, sort of maintain the buffer zone that is there, so it would stay mostly in its natural state. And then I will show you the plans. On the first level, you can see the two-car garage, which is a two-bay. That would be access from the circular driveway. A small entry here to get into the building, and that's a 12-by-12 home office. And then there would be just a stair that gets you up to the accessory dwelling unit. And I think that's the first drawing, and that's the plan. That's the upper level, and then the lower level is there. Yeah? We're trying to use, make the building very energy-efficient, so we have a solar collector array that's gonna generate some power. We're super-insulating it, and our goal for the project is actually to make it net positive, if we can, so that we're not expending any energy beyond what it's creating. And then in the design of it, I think we're using some, of a timber frame structure, so that we're trying to also reduce the embodied carbon that's in the planet. And so part of this is a way to show that it's possible to do a small building and actually allow us to stay and age in place. And the other part is to understand what the costs are, as well as the planning involved for doing a small, super-insulated building. It's on the smaller scale for the accessory dwelling unit, and I will put that plan up. That's the next plan, Leanne. And you can see that it has a kitchen, a kitchenette, and a one-bedroom and a small living space. That'll stay still. And so you can, and I wanna point it to, there we are. So you can see there's a living space, a kitchenette. This is the stair and access coming up, a bathroom, and then a bedroom. And that's roughly on top of where the garage is. We would use mini splits for high-efficiency heating and cooling. And then I think you can move to the elevations, which show a little bit of what it looks like. And so that's the garage elevation, and then there would be, the accessory unit is up above, and then there's a stair. And then I think the last elevation, there's one more, maybe? Yep, and that shows the kind of solar collector array. One of the interesting things about the project, well, it's interesting to us, but interesting in general, is that the orientation of the site is north, south, east, west, which is very good for solar energy. And so on the south side, it just fits by our driveway, and there is a perfect place for a solar collector array to generate the power. And so we're hoping that it'll be a test case and see. We've been working with Sunbug Solar, which is one of the solar companies, to try to do some analysis on how efficient this might be in terms of the energy benefit. I think the way it's cited, the preliminary numbers were around 78% or almost 80% efficient, which is pretty good. And I think we're going to try to make the walls out of maybe two-by-eights, so we can add the extra layer of insulation to it. And I think, I'll put this side to the right back up. You can kind of see that it's a little bit kitty-corner to the property. So it also means that both the garage elevation and the solar collectors are not facing the street. So they're perpendicular or away from the street, so that there would be less impact for, the visual impact for the change that's happening here with the building of the small structure.
Thank you very much. Before we open up for a public discussion and board discussion, I do need to read the memos in, because they weren't read in the last meeting. So I'll do that, and then we can move to the next step. So this memo is dated May 30th. It's from Brendan Bride, the building commissioner. He states, lots eight and 10 have merged in accordance with Section 2550 of the Protective Zoning Bylaws. It should be noted that although this ADU is unique in that it appears as a standalone house, it will always be an ADU associated with the main house in perpetuity. Otherwise, the applicant appears to meet the requirements for an ADU as described in the zoning bylaws. The second memorandum is dated June 12th, 2023. That might, might have, should be 2024, I think, yeah. It's from Dave DeCanto, Director of Natural Resources. Subject Conservation Commission's comments for 8 and 10 Cranberry Trail special permit. The Conservation Commission has reviewed the special permit application for 8 and 10 Cranberry Trail, and would like to remind the applicants that both subject properties have significant resource areas, flood zone, and BVW, either on the lots or in close proximity. So any, in bold and underlined, project would require conservation review slash approval. Please see attached map. Let him know if there's any questions. And then there's a map. If anybody wants to see it, they're welcome to look at the map. I can pass it around if you'd like. And then I think there is one more, and this is from Jeff Picard. It may be similar to what he had explained earlier, but I'll read his memo in for the record. It's dated Friday, June 14th, 2024, and it states, "Good morning. I have reviewed the documents for 8 and 10 Cranberry Trail. I will not be at the June 18th meeting. I would like to submit the following comments as a sandwich president, and that this email be read into the record. Staff recommended two conditions. I support the two conditions recommended by the staff, namely, the two lots should be joined, and an affidavit should be submitted stating that the owners will reside at the property. These conditions need to be fulfilled prior to a building permit being issued. Home office. In the application, it states that the ADU will contain a home office. Are there any regulations, WRT, a home, let me, with, a home office in any R2 district? If there are, these regulations should be reviewed with the applicant. Existing septic system. I could not find any information with respect to the existing septic system and plan for tying in the ADU. How many bedrooms currently exist? What is the existing septic system sized for? Does one bedroom in the existing home need to be eliminated to accommodate the additional bedroom in the ADU? Thank you for addressing these points at the upcoming planning board review of this And then there's another memo from Cheryl Tagayas, dated June 12th, 2024, regarding the 8 Cranberry Trail application. It states, Dear Sandwich Planning Board, my husband George and I own the property at 9 Cranberry Trail. Paul Hagen reviewed the plans for the accessory dwelling unit that he and M.G. Rosenbaum would like to build at their property at 8 Cranberry Trail. With us a few weeks ago, we fully support their application for this project. Sincerely, Cheryl and George Tagayas." And those are all the memos. I know there was a number of questions in the memo from Jeff Picard. Perhaps I can go through them a little bit slower, and then you can address them. Okay, great. Home office. Are there any regulations with the home office in an R2 district? So this might be for Leanne. I don't know if you know that off the top of your head.
I do. So a home occupation is allowed by right in all of our residential districts. We ran through the bylaw with Paul when he stopped by our office to go through the permitting process, so nothing he will be doing would be without, outside the realm of our home occupation bylaw. So you're allowed to have one person work for you that is not a family member. All parking remains on-site. It shall be no larger than 30% of the floor area of your home. Paul meets all the criteria for a home office.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. Regarding the existing septic system, how many bedrooms currently exist?
Mike can answer that. Three, in the existing house, and we were proposing one additional bedroom in the ADU. We plan on modifying and adding to the existing septic system, not taking a bedroom away from the existing house. And we just, maybe two weeks ago, before prior hearing, had a perk test performed, and Down Cape Engineering, who generated the plan, is in the process of looking at the septic and what the most efficient and best way of adding that bedroom to either the existing system or putting in an additional leaching area to cover that additional bedroom on the property.
Okay. Thank you. I believe that answers all the questions in this memo, so thank you for that. And then, Chair, I typically like to open it up to the public so that they can speak, and so will the board, and you know, if you have any questions for the public or the applicant. Maybe we'll start with the applicant. You know, if you have any questions for him, and then we can call the public up to have any comments or questions as well. Anybody from the board have any questions or comments?
Can you just repeat for me where it indicated that the properties are now joined?
We, so there are two separate properties, and then our plan is part of going through this process, just as was noted by the planning department, to join the properties. When I spoke to Brendan, the town considers the properties merged. It's how it's written, and so we approached it that way. And when we asked the question, did we have to merge them prior to this hearing process or going before historic or conservation? The answer was, so long as it was done prior to the issuance of the building permit, which is the legal right to do it, we would, we would actually merge the properties and have a new site plan created. And on that new site plan, it would have both parcels drawn, not eight and 10.
I see. All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Yes. There was the memorandum from the Conservation Commission. Have you gone before them?
Informally, we have not gone before them yet.
Okay.
And so that's next on our, getting on our docket. We hired the wetlands and the border vegetation. We hired a consultant, Brittany Duranziano, and she's designated it and is consulting on our project. And then the plan is, once our septic, which Conservation was very interested in as well, is designed, are changes. They wanted more complete plans before we go before Conservation. And that's the only thing that's missing from this drawing as well.
Any other? Yes. So I noticed on the application, your permanent address was obviously not Sandwich address. I just wanted to find out what steps you've taken to provide the planning board with some kind of affidavit or assurance that this will be your residence?
Other than verbally, nothing in writing, other than my narrative that I had written. I think both properties are in my wife's ownership, their trust for our children, and so she has and is the current resident there upon retirement and is in control of both trusts. And so our plan is to have that occur as soon as the parcels are combined. And she would be the one listed as resident. We're still together, but legally, both parcels are in her name.
And just, if I could provide a little bit further clarification?
Please.
There is a document that we have drawn up that states that. It's an affidavit that gets signed and is registered at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds, and we typically do that once the special permit's granted. It usually is listed as a condition that a building permit shall not be issued until that, that document is provided to the building department and the planning department.
Thank you.
Another question, maybe for the chair, and you might have partially entered it, so I'm new. We raised these issues. Does this board make a recommendation or condition as to what needs to be done? Or do we have to track to closure to assure those things are done?
So it depends on the issue. Certain conditions can be written in to the decision, if we elect them to be written in, but matters such as septic conservation, that happens in natural course. They can't do anything relative to conservation area without conservation approval, regardless as to whether or not we condition for it. So, you know, we're really within the purview of the planning board, you know, keeping it to the subdivision regulations and making sure that it, you know, meets the bylaws. And anything outside our purview, Conservation, Board of Health, Title V, all of that would be addressed separately.
So for example, septic is not part of the purview of this board?
It is, it is and it isn't. It's not in the sense that we can't approve, like, the perk test will be done, it'll be, make sure that it can, the septic can be installed, the Board of Health is going to have to sign off on it. If it impacts Conservation, they'll have to sign off on it as well. You know, it is in our purview as far as, you know, distance from things, you know, where it sits on the property, things like that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Add?
Nope, it's fine.
Okay. Thank you. I'll turn it over to the public, if anybody wants to come up and speak. So I guess at this point, before we close the public hearing, we can maybe take a straw to determine whether or not, see where everybody sits, and we can then turn it over to you to see if you'd like to continue until next meeting, or if you would like to go ahead and close the public hearing today, and then we can take a vote. Okay, so we'll start, oh, yeah.
Could I just ask the town planner one quick question?
Of course.
The, one of the points to consider was that, that it will be the primary residence. Is that how the affidavit reads?
Yes.
And that will in fact be the case, that it will be the primary residence?
Yes, they're swearing that this will be their primary residence. There's a few other conditions listed in that affidavit, you know, that it'll be rented, if it is going to be rented, it's for a year-round rental, it won't be used for short-term rentals. So I can always provide a copy of that to the board if they'd like to see that in the future, so they know exactly what the applicants are signing on to. But yes, a primary residence.
Okay, so then for straw, we'll start with Melissa, and we'll just work our way down. If you just wanted to give us your thoughts and where you stand on it at present, and how you may vote?
Yeah. I, you know, there's a kind of a lot of moving pieces, especially with things kind of being a little bit up in the air. So I guess this isn't really a yes or no on approval of the application, but it's more of a, like a strong feeling that we might not want to vote on it tonight and to continue it to the next meeting, so that we can just really button up those things that are kind of out there that need to be clarified.
Okay. Thank you.
So I agree with what was stated. I would like clarification about moving forward before making a vote.
Yeah, I would have to concur with that as well. I mean, I don't want to go forward with this and then find out that we couldn't do that.
Okay. Agreed.
With points made. Okay.
I would also concur with everyone else.
Sounds like we might be looking at a continuation. All right.
It was a very informative presentation.
I think also, I mean, from our perspective too, the answers I tried to have, I almost had the engineering gun for this particular meeting, but with the holidays and things coming up. So I think I'm anticipating for the next two weeks that those questions that were raised today will have a drawing, and you can look at it and make decisions based on what we believe.
Thank you. Okay, so then I guess we'll take a motion to continue. But before I do, so the next meeting is the 16th?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Does anybody in the mental calendar have any conflict with the 16th? I know, you, so you won't be available.
I might.
You might. I think I'm here. Oh, it doesn't matter, because I recused. So it might, it doesn't matter if I'm here.
I'm here.
So one, two, three, four, if Jeff comes in, so we-
Not enough.
Not enough.
You have to have five.
So we would have to, we would have to continue again at that meeting, and then the meeting after.
August 6th.
That is August 6th, and, and yeah, and I don't know how-
Say, if I'm the blocker, I don't know what's appropriate to say, I will change my plans to not put you behind that far in your schedule. I don't-
You can call in. We've done, they can, we can still do call-ins, as long as we can hear them and they can hear us.
Yes. It's just-
I'll be physically able to call in, but thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, but then if you have a problem.
Yeah.
So-
I'll be able to, I'll know before the meeting for sure.
Okay. It looks like we don't really have much of a choice to continue. So I think the 16th, and so once we know from you, maybe we can do an email, and then we can decide from there. All right, so then with the-
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
If, if we already know that there is going to be a quorum in two weeks, can we just push it to the next meeting so that my husband doesn't have to drive down from Boston again?
Maybe. Is that okay? Can we, we continue it that far out?
If you continue it to the 16th, the applicant does not have to be present for that continuation.
Yes, but don't we want to answer all of these questions for you?
You wouldn't have to, they wouldn't have to have testimony at that. If you were just continuing it to the following meeting, there would be no conversation. They could just request the continuance, yeah. Just administrative. You're not required to come, but just on the off chance, we would have quorum on the 16th. I don't want to push you, I mean, push you off.
I know I'm available, so if chance it happens that people are available and can do it, just, Leanne, just let me know. And I appreciate the comments and the honesty about-
Paul, I'm sorry, I'm just going to ask, if you go to the microphone?
Yes.
I know, it's all right. Everyone does.
I think, I appreciate the honesty in your answers about it, and as I say, we want to get it right. So that's the idea, working within the town constraints and zoning and bylaws. And so I think if you've got questions, I also have questions, so they're the same questions. I think we're not at odds at all. We're just looking at more information to properly describe the project and make sure that we do what's appropriate from the town's perspective, but also for our own family planning as well. I mean, we love being here, so I think that's our goal, and this is a really good way of helping us do that. So my last two cents.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation tonight. So we'll take a motion to continue with the date, the time, and the place, right? Okay. So I'll take a motion for all three of those.
I will make a motion to continue the special permit application of 8 and 10 Cranberry Trail to July 16th, 2024, 6:00 PM at the Sand Hill School Building.
I second that motion.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Anyone oppose? All right, and no abstains. Okay. Motion to continue is approved. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So that was our only agenda item for old business. New business, it does not appear to- New business, there does not appear to be any. The next agenda item is board discussion. This is a request for comment, number 24-15, 76 Route 130 and 55 Pimlico Pond Road, comprehensive permit, NSG Village Green -1 LLC. So we'll turn to Leanne, maybe give us a little background.
Let me just pull up the permit, it's having a crash there. Okay. Okay, well, that's loading. So we received a comprehensive permit application for 76 Route 130 and 55 Pimlico Pond Road. This is scheduled to go before the zoning Board of Appeals on July 9th, July 9th, which is next Tuesday, and that is at Old Town Hall, 130 Main Street. So this project is for, is an affordable housing development, where a portion of the proposed units, the 144 proposed rental units, would be, I think about 36 of them would be affordable, and the rest at market rate. There's several other items that have been submitted with the comprehensive permit. There is a plan for an approval not required to combine some of the lots, there's a lot of property around there, I can show you on a, on a map, that they're going to try and combine it just to have 76 and 55 Pimlico Pond. They're also proposing a solar array, a ground-mounted solar array, an environmental agriculture building, a wastewater treatment facility, and some stormwater systems. So it's a very large project. It's typically, some of these items would go before the planning board for approval, but because it's a comprehensive permit under Chapter 40B of Massachusetts General Law, it waives the need to go before the planning board, and it will all be going before the zoning board. So what we're asking for is for your comments on the project, specifically that relate to things that would generally be in the planning board's purview, so that we can provide a full picture to the zoning board for when they have to make their decision.
Thank you. Anybody have any comments to start with? This was the one, I don't know if any of you were here when Attorney Fitch came before us with the septic, we, yeah, they were doing like a nitrogen-sensitive septic system, and it's like new technology, and it was very involved conversation, and he's come before us a few times on it, but this is the same one, correct?
Correct, yep.
I, Leanne, I have a question for Leanne, if I could, with the chair.
Sure.
So, Leanne, I'm trying to understand something. So there are two waivers relative to the planning board. And the process, what I'm trying to understand is, as you stated, it's a comprehensive, um...
Permit.
Permit. And therefore, they don't have to come before the planning board. But in the application, the ZBA is asked, being asked, to waive those two conditions. That's what I don't understand. If the ZBA said, "No, we're not going to waive those," does that mean they would then come before the planning board? That's what I'm trying to understand.
No, they would not.
Why, why are they in there as waivers then? Because they're, it's already granted.
The zoning board would have to grant the waivers.
But what happens if the zoning board turns down the waivers? Those two, just the two that apply to the planning board?
Well, so they would either, if they turned down those waivers, the developers would either contest that to Housing Appeals Court and say that this renders our project uneconomic. It would more likely go to Housing Appeals Court than it would, it wouldn't come to the planning board.
But it would never come to the planning board. That's what's confusing me, is why they have to ask permission to waive coming before us, but if they don't get that, they don't come before us, they then go...
I mean, they're not asking permission, they're not waiving coming before you, that's, that's a given, so they don't have to go before the planning board, they don't have to go before the Conservation Commission. If they were in the historic district, they wouldn't have to go in front of the historic district. That's what's written in the statute. The items that they're requesting waivers for are typically some of the other boards' jurisdictions. So what we're asking for is your thoughts on those particular waivers, because the zoning board doesn't typically deal with, with those types of waivers.
Right, so there are two waivers in there that apply to us.
Correct.
So one would say that we have the expertise on those, so therefore, we can offer comments that we'd like to see the ZBA ask, and I understand that, right?
Yeah.
What I was curious about is, what happened if they turned them down? I was hoping the answer was, they come before us and we get to ask the questions directly. But what you're saying is, no, we have to ask the questions indirectly. So we have to write up a response to go forward, to ask the questions that we would ask.
Correct.
She's kind of convoluted.
It's a very convoluted process.
Benefit of the presentation.
Correct.
And question and answers.
Yes.
Yeah, because the two, the two waivers being asked for, sorry, Melissa's coming, you know, I went to look for, okay, why are they asking for them? There's no explanation in here. So we're being asked to send forward comments, but we have nothing to comment on.
Yes. So I know that sounds ridiculous. So what happens is, once you receive a comprehensive permit, within a short 10-day period, you have to solicit comments from all your board towns and committees. The way the statute's written is in the favor of the developer, and it's the town's burden to prove why this project should not move forward. So it's completely roles reversed to what we would usually see when you see someone else applying for an application, where you're constantly soliciting the information. It's the other way around, where we're trying to draw to get the clearest picture, but we're on very, very tight timeframes. I do think if you don't have full comments tonight, I mean, this will be a lengthy process. If you'd like to watch the meeting on July 9th, where you'd see the presentation, we can absolutely come back for another request for comment and let the zoning board know that, that the planning board will comment, just not before the testimony given on the 9th. That is an option to you.
I hadn't talked about that before tonight, but I liked the idea, I plan on going, as a citizen, and listening and ask some questions as a citizen, as I can. But I like that idea that if we send something forward that says, "Those that can and are going to attend, we're going to watch the presentation," and based on that, we would then talk about comments that we want to send forward. I like that idea. Because right now, there's nothing for me to, to really, kind of intelligence to respond to.
When is the ZBA needed?
July 9th. Yeah, so it's next Tuesday evening.
In the evening.
Yeah, same, 6 o'clock, and it's at Old Town Hall, we did a larger venue. Is the board okay with me preparing a memo to the zoning board, just stating those facts for the record?
I think so. Yeah, I think, I mean, just due to the scale of the project, and then not really having the benefit of the knowledge to, to put forth some thoughtful comments and questions.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to ask a couple of questions if I can, for some clarity. So, right, so the requested relief, right, is to see requested waivers submitted here with. Can you just state those two waivers that would be applicable to the planning board? There's, I mean, it's a comprehensive packet of information, and I just want to make sure I have the right information. So do have...
Let me get to the waiver section, just so I can speak to them.
Thank you.
So there's the two waivers, but there's also, just as I'm getting to them, there's also the approval not required plan that they're, they're also asking for the zoning board to approve, which, as you know, typically falls under the jurisdiction of the planning board.
And that's for the combination of the lots?
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's not a waiver, as I understand it.
Not a waiver.
It's just that it's being handled by them.
Yes.
They still have, as I understand, they still have to meet all the regulations under approval not required, is that correct?
They still do, yes, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so it's just that, as opposed to us handling it, they're handling it.
I can just find the waiver section.
Yeah, the waivers are...
They're towards the end, aren't they?
Yes, they're in the, I think it's Section 7, I printed them out.
The approval not required is for the reconfiguration of the map, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, right now, it's split into five parcels, where you have the two large parcels are 76 Route 130, and then 55 Pimlico Pond Road, and then there's smaller little parcels around from previous approval not requireds. So they're trying to just bring it together to create those two addresses. It's like, please bear with me for a minute. If you want to see the A&R plan, it's here.
I printed it, if you want to take it. You can't...
Oh, the waivers?
I printed a section on waivers, yeah.
Thank you. Might be a little bit easier, because my computer's thing is a little slow. Thank you. Okay. So the first waiver would be for the solar photovoltaic, ground-mounted, so typically that's a special permit with the planning board. They are proposing a solar array accessory to the housing, so that would be something that you should take a look at, take a look at the zoning regulations that we would usually have as conditions for that type of project, and see, you know, what would be applicable in this case. So that's, that's the first waiver.
And that's completely new from any prior A&R that was ever applied for, right? This is totally new, the solar voltic.
Yeah, so it's typically, it's usually a special permit with this board, once you get to the megawatts that they're proposing. So the previous projects that this board would have seen would have been on Catuit Road for that large solar array, the town projects at the high school and the Sandwich Hollows, all those would have been special permits through this board. So this is asking for a waiver from these zoning bylaw requirements to the zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay, thank you.
And then, Section 4610, the prohibition against locating a multifamily development on a scenic road. So it is a scenic road, that portion of 130. So you would be asked to comment on that, as scenic road is the authority of the planning board. However, in this case, the zoning Board of Appeals will be making that decision, but your input would be needed, yeah.
How would that work if they were going to have to cut scenic trees? Would that still be...
That would fall within the jurisdiction of the zoning board.
That, that too, okay.
Yes, yeah. Everything related to a comprehensive permit would fall under their jurisdiction, as long as it's a local regulation. If it's a state regulation, it has to be upheld and go through those entities. So for any wastewater treatment, they have to go to the Department of Environmental Protection, that can't be waived. And then one other point that the town, that would be handy for you to look at as the planning board, is you are the jurisdiction that creates the housing production plan. It's referenced several times throughout the application. It's good to look at this compared to what our goals are in the housing production plan, and how this project fits within those goals. So there's kind of four areas that the board should consider.
And does the town know, because this is 144 units of rental, so all would get applied to our percentage?
Our subsidized, yeah.
For, because we have to hit the 10% under 40B. Do you, do you know where this would take us, with or without the 55-plus wing?
With the wing school, I think we're hitting at about 7.5%.
Okay, from the 4.26.
Yes. With, yeah, the wing school is bringing up us up to like 5.6%, and then this would bring us further to about 7.5%, I believe.
And would this be enough to do that safe harbor?
This would be enough to do safe harbor. So then it'd be two years where if we did not wish to see a 40B, we would not have to entertain one. It's just a two-year period of safe harbor.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Any further comments on that for now, otherwise we'll just enter in that note.
Just a clarification. You said earlier that there was some requirement within 10 days you had to get comment from the other town boards, but am I understanding those comments are not, don't require response?
I should say, you have to send a request for comment within 10 days, but there isn't a time period to solicit the comments back. We just have to show that we sent, sent it out for comment. So even though there was information that maybe was lacking, or that we wished that we had had to be able to provide to the boards and committees, we would, we had to send it, pretty much the minute we got the application. Does that answer your question?
In part.
Okay.
But then the comments that we provide to the zoning board, they, they can take them on board or not.
Correct.
We make them, but there's no required action or response.
Correct.
They can take them into consideration and maybe add a few conditions and try to, you know, maybe do a few things, like with solar arrays, maybe consider the buffer zone, or what kind of fencing and noise control, different things that we've addressed with other ones, how much they're able to do and condition is another question, but at least they can hear and know, and the town can know that we made comment on it and addressed it, so...
So then, I guess my question for, on that note, is, is there anything that the planning board would like to provide as comment in advance of the hearing that is going to be had next week? In addition to potentially continuing it, so we can listen to the presentation and then provide additional feedback?
I mean, I think standard, some standard points, like the scenic trees, I just think, because we do spend quite a lot of time and consideration on our scenic trees, I think just a nod to extra consideration being given to any that may need to be cut, just at the meeting, I think might be worthwhile to bring forward, at least a recognition of that. That's one. And then, kind of on the heels of what Jeannie and I had just kind of went back and forth on a little bit, was just the solar arrays. I know they're probably going to get a lot of abutters are going to show up and have these comments, but maybe just, you know, the, the thought of that we're going to be looking for appropriate buffer zones and consideration of the abutters, fencing, you know, things like that.
Well, I mean, I think there's a lot of considerations of like solar, you know, Harvard just put out a study about like clearcutting large lots, it's not really saving, you know, the environment to put up these solar panels that have some lifespan that then have to be disposed of versus why, I mean, they're, they're clearly getting some tax credits and money to do it, but at the same time, solar panels could be put on the top of roofs or parking spaces versus clearing an entire, you know, acreage of, of trees and going right against the neighboring lots. I mean, I think that's an important comment that I feel like I have.
And just to, on the solar thing, I'm wondering, how does that impact the tenants who access these facilities? I mean, do they get some benefit from this solar array being, and can we ask that kind of question?
I can actually answer that for you, because we had a presentation with Attorney Fitch, and the, and I pressed the applicant, or the, the party at the time of, they indicated they had contracts that the power would already be sold, and I asked who their customer was, and they said it is Boston Universities. So it's, I don't believe that it's staying here, but that would be probably something that could be asked at...
So if I, if you read the application, it addresses your question.
Really, I don't, I didn't see Boston.
It talked about the fact that if they lose power, they can, they're a microgrid, they're going to be able to power the units. The reason I bring it up is you've got to be careful about what we've been told in the past versus what they finally decided, because, like I said, if you read the application, it does speak briefly to what they're going to do with the power they generate.
That is, it's my question though, Jeff, I was more, I was more concerned about who would benefit from that.
No, no, as I said, if you read the comprehensive permit, it speaks to that. They talk about batteries, they talk about providing power to the, to this unit, that's why they want to do it, as well as sell it. They talk about what they're going to do during the day and at night. It's not very descriptive, they're going to be wrong. It's not the kind of answers that we get when we have them in front of us, but it is slightly different than what Attorney Fitch told us a couple of times this conference.
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're building one of those B E S S places, right, to store the power on site, in addition to the solar panels.
I think because they're separating the, they're subdividing the land, one section's going to be for solar panel, if I remember correctly, and one section was for the apartments. So they would be separate.
Right.
But if you... Right, but if you notice their wording in their plan, they use words like "could."
That's what I said, it's, it's, but it...
That doesn't necessarily mean that that is, that what is going to happen, it's just that it, I mean, anything could happen.
No, but my point is, we, we have to react to the application, not what Attorney Fitch told us, which was unofficial. You know, that was one, he came in and spoke to us a number of times, okay, but they were not formal meetings. They, it, it, that was very important, it was information only, he's coming, when he came those times to give that, that information. What we can react to is what's in the application.
We can react to what was presented before us as well, you know, if it's in the application, but we can take consideration, and consideration can be given too, at, at the board members' discretion, what was provided to them informationally in anticipation of the comprehensive permit being filed. I think that that is appropriate, and minutes are available if, if members would like to review them, because there was a substantial amount of information provided and some real professional, you know, opinions given, especially with the, the septic. I thought that was very informative, interesting, and I know it was, and it was nice to see them come forward and try to explain that to us, so we had some information going into being asked for comments and things like that. So I think it is important to give consideration to all the information provided.
My, my, my only point is, that was information, this is the application, they do not have to, when they came in and they presented that, if, if they've gone in a different direction now in the application, that information does not oblige them to do anything. It's not legally binding in any way. If the septic system is different, if the, if the soul is different, the storage is different, who are they going to sell it to? It was just information. We, in fact, I made a point of making sure that we mentioned that each time he came in, we got, none of this was binding, it was, it was just information. In fact, that's why I asked, why is he taking our time to go over it? Because there was nothing there. They could, they could go in a totally different direction and there's nothing binding. You can ask them why they went in a totally different direction, but they're not bound to go in the direction they told us they were going to go in, at all. It was nothing legally.
Right, I mean, Ann, Ann and I, I mean, not to speak for Ann, but we, we did not have the benefit. I'm basing my concerns on the application itself.
Right, I see.
And it is a very extensive document that we were given, you know, very recently, and it's a lot to memorize, you know, 200 and something, 80 pages worth of a plan to then be providing some comments. So if Ann asks, perhaps, where might that energy be sold, I think it's an appropriate question.
Oh, I do too. I wouldn't say it was. What I was saying was, don't base where it's going to be sold on what we were told by Attorney Fitch a few months ago, because that may not be true.
My comment wasn't what Attorney Fitch had stated, it was what the applicant had stated when I specifically asked.
Okay, or the applicant, I see.
They indicated they had contracts.
Right.
And I asked who those contracts were with.
I know, I was there.
So you're right, there could have been, between then and now, those contracts could have been canceled, something different could have happened, but the wording in their application does, it's vague.
Yes, and we should ask questions, but, but the, but the application is vague, I don't know what questions to ask because it's so vague. I really want to hear them first. I don't know if I want to send a comment forward relative to buffer, because they may be already addressing that. I can't tell from the drawings. I, I looked at drawings and, you know, they're nice, they're, they're pictures, but they don't give you enough insight. You know, I was, I'm comfortable with what Leanne said, that, you know, that we want to wait until we get more information and so forth. I'm not comfortable sending forward any questions, because I, I don't know the, you know, I don't know the validity of the question. They, it may have been addressed, it may not have been addressed. You know, to start asking about buffer zones now and, I don't know if they're going to cut any trees, I don't know how close they're going to come to the road. You know, the scenic road is, is the, as, as we know, it's, it's the trees within the right of way. They may not be touching any trees within the right of way. So I understand starting to get them aware of it, but I'm not sure now's the time to send it forward. That's my opinion, to send this stuff forward. I, I, I do think it's the time to send it forward, I think it's after the, it's after the meeting on, on July 6th, excuse me, July 9th. I don't, if, I'm available, I'm going, I am available, I'm saying, you know, if other members are available, it's, it's going to be an informative meeting, I think both as board members and as citizens of the town, it's, it's of value. I, I was concerned, like, when this agenda came in, I said it earlier, I was concerned about, what are we going to send forward? I liked what Leanne suggested, that, you know, it's like, we're holding comment until we get, because what that says is, you know, you didn't give us enough information to make intelligent comments. That's where I'm at.
Would anybody like to put forward a comment, a general comment, or would you like to wait? I mean, it is probably going to be a lengthy process, it's not going to happen in one meeting, so I don't think it would be inappropriate to wait, and I am okay with that myself.
I'd like to wait.
Okay. Okay, we'll do that then, we'll wait.
Okay.
Thank you for the suggestion.
Sure, and I will send a memo forward to the zoning board, letting them know that, that they'll anticipate comments after your next meeting on the 16th.
Okay, thank you for that.
All right, good. Next is other matters not reasonably anticipated. Anyone have any not reasonably anticipated matters?
I'll find me, just a few. So back on the June 18th agenda again, I'm curious to ask some questions. On the board discussion, so the board discussions didn't occur.
That was a fun one. It's my, it's my son and he must have called three times and so it, now it's going to ring.
On the board discussions, I'm curious where we are with these items that didn't get previously addressed. Authorized agent appointment, where are we with that? That was a board discussion item, it's not tonight, so I'm wondering, where are we with that?
So that was another oversight, that I forgot to put that on the next agenda. So Maureen alerted me to that this morning also and said, "We'll push that on to the 16th," because I, I omitted it mistakenly, yeah.
And then the, the May 20, '24 signature sheet, that was also...
Same thing, yeah.
Same thing, so it'll be on the next one.
It'll be on the 16th, yeah.
Okay, great. And then the, the only other thing I'm, I was curious to ask was, at the town meeting, as you know, we had a warrant article about affordability. At the meeting, it was indicated that it was going to require a 2/3 vote, it, it lost by one vote. If we had had one negative vote go positive, it would have, it would have passed. Later, I read in the Enterprise, this young lady here writes all these articles, they're great, you should read them, she does a wonderful job, that, hey, that only required a majority, not a 2/3, and it was being reviewed if, therefore it did pass or could be considered to have passed. Have we heard a ruling on that yet?
We have not heard a ruling yet. We have sent it to the Attorney General's office with all of the other zoning amendments and with the vote that occurred. So we will hear back probably in August as to whether or not it passed. But it was funny at that meeting, you know, myself and Ralph thought, "Oh, oh, it's failed." And then we looked up and we saw 2/3, and we thought, wait, 2/3, this is housing choice, it's only a majority vote. So it kind of added a little level of ambiguity, so the next morning, we, we called town council and they said, "We think you're right, it's, it's housing choice, so it should pass." So they advised us to submit it with our zoning, so we did that.
Nice, yeah. Yeah, the moderator said it needed 2/3.
Yes.
Town council did not correct them.
Correct.
Then we voted and it failed by one vote, unfortunately. But then I read in the article in the paper and I said, "Wow, that's great."
Yeah, but housing choice came out a couple of years ago, where they changed the zoning requirements from a 2/3 vote to a majority vote to help pass bylaws to do with affordable housing. So everyone's still kind of wrapping their head around the difference, you're so used to zoning being 2/3. So we'll find out in August and we'll update the board then as to whether or not it passes.
If for any reason they say it didn't, would it be the thought that we would put it forward at the next town meeting then, again?
We would have to look at it, because if a zoning bylaw fails, there's a cooling-off period. I believe it's about two years before you can reintroduce the zoning article again.
But could you just change something in it?
It'd have to be a substantive change, it can't be anything to try and circumvent the process, yeah, so it would have to be something, you know, different, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be unfortunate. Thank you.
Any other matters not reasonably anticipated? All right, with that, oh, yep.
Sorry, just want to make a point of clarification. I think we did not address a min, like a set of minutes that needed approval, or did we?
We, we did not address it because I forgot to put it on the agenda.
Okay, and so we put it at the...
Yeah, so basically, a lot of the items are on the previous agenda, I didn't think to push them to this agenda.
Thank you. I, I know we have, like, three meetings to do it, so, okay, yeah. All right, thank you.
Take a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose, abstain? Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Happy Fourth, everyone.
Happy Fourth.
Welcome to the planning board.
We worked on this like it's something that's...
Oh, yeah.
Another year ago.
How you doing? I wanted to leave. Nice to meet you too.
Yes, yeah.
You know, maybe just maybe here, but, you know, see who goes.